We are, we are live.
We are, okay.
Goodness.
Drive. Washburn, huh? Washburn Drive. Oh, okay. Thank you. Yep. It's on Washburn Drive. All right, it is 6:00 PM. Call, need the order, open with pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, activity reports, mine pretty brief again. Let's see, we had our work session there the other night and then we did have a, what are we called, the labor?
Labor board?
Labor.
Labor negotiation board?
Labor Negotiation Committee or whatever it is. And we have one item, least coming out of there, and then one informational. And Councilmember LeBeau.
I have the exact same meetings I was at. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hertzberg. All I had was finance.
Oh, that's right, we had finance meetings.
And I'm sure that was enough. All right.
In addition to the special meetings we had, there was a joint planning board and the township may be looking at modifying some of their zoning ordinances and then coming back on the things that we discussed.
Fun. Councilmember Gilmore.
The working session and the liquor board special we did.
All right, thank you. And Department Head Report. Just I will have to leave before seven, so hopefully we're done by then, otherwise I'll have to pass the gavel off being an odd night here. And Bill gets out of working bingo tonight because of moving the meeting, so things are shuffled around. All right, and we have one Department Head Report, Chief Wagner.
Thank you, I will try to make this short since you have to go. Couple things going on that I just want to make people aware of. Winter parking does start Friday, so I kind of want to remind everybody that please make sure your vehicles are off the road starting Friday night for winter parking ordinance. We are currently working on our shop with the cop program. We are going to have to modify that a little bit this year. I reached out to Grace United Methodist Church today and I believe we've got some things set up to where we can transport the kids so we can still do the program. We just won't be able to do it in town as we don't really have any good places to shop for them. We've got three officers in the next four weeks going to CIT training, the crisis intervention. Officer Lynch has got moved from July. Cody and Colin are currently at it this week. Our one officer who is out with an injury, it looks like our timeline's probably next spring to early summer before he is back. We're in the process of working on our year-end reviews and goals for the individual goals for the officers. We'll be doing our annual firearms qualification for night stuff coming up as well. Wanted to pass on to you guys, I spoke with Superintendent Bullard the other day, he is very pleased with how the SRO program is going this year. He had nothing positive comments to say about both Jerome and Tony and their work in the school so far. Been in communication with the sheriff. He is looking to kind of partner with the Chiefs Association and the county to create a large countywide chaplaincy program so that at any point if officers need them throughout the county, we have a collection of people who can respond to assist when those services are needed. And then not to take any thunder away from the informational, but we do have the football send-off this Thursday when we'll be leaving the school at 9:15. In theory, I know the schedule says we should be by the elementary by 9:20. We're going to have to drive really slow, but right around that 9:15 to 9:20 mark, we should be coming through the downtown area with the boys as they head off to state.
Is that great? Thank you. Any questions of the chief? Okay, if not, we will go into our consent agenda and a note to that at 6:30, we do have a recess for a public hearing for certification of passage to garbage, water, and sewer snow removal and mowing bills. Then we have the consent agenda before us, which are the minutes from those meetings as listed on page one and the vouchers on page two totaling $1,706,427.18.
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moshe Merinki, seconded by LeBeau to approve the consent agenda discussion. On favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, none, and that carries. All right, and with election, just less than a year away now, we've got a request for providing early voting to Stearns County residents. Renee?
This is something new. With the presidential primary, the county doesn't feel their staff heavy enough to be able to take care of all the pre-elections for the presidential primary, which is in March. And so they politely asked if the city of Painesville would provide early voting to its residents. There was some, another city in Stearns County said that they would prefer not to participate, and the comment back from the county was, "I can either ask nicely or I can force you to take it."
Oh, interesting.
So, kind of a technicality, whether you want to do it or not, we're going to get it regardless. But this would be something new and I see that in the future, they're going to keep this going. Once we start, I don't believe they're going to take it back. So it's not every city in the county, there's 10 cities in the county that they're asking to do early voting, and they are taking all the townships, will all be mail ballot.
What, $727, what percentage of that is what it costs us roughly?
Basically, I'm only going to have one election judge working that timeframe and on Saturday with me. Otherwise, staff can check them in and let them vote. They recommended using this room, but I'm going to use the meeting room because it's smaller and we can bring people in here if we have bigger meetings. So that will pretty much cover our costs. I don't, I, I'm not foreseeing any, I think more people are going to get a mail ballot and mail it back to the county than come in, but we'll see. I think it's a good, a good option for our community. It does not include the township, so it's only people in the city limits. So, but I think that will cover our costs.
Move to approve the agreement between Stearns County and the city of Painesville for providing early voting to the residents of Stearns County.
Second, Moshe Merinki, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the agreement between Stearns County and the city of Painesville for providing early voting to the residents of Stearns County. Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye? I oppose, none, and that carries. And we're looking for some approval for the annual city service recognition luncheon. We have some dates and some options for menu and... Was there a preference from staff at all? Mondays, Wednesdays, Tuesdays?
Monday, the ninth, is your truth in taxation in your council meeting.
Second and third looks good.
I would prefer not the second or the eleventh.
Not the second or the eleventh, okay.
And I would say that leaves probably the ninth or 10th for me. I will be out the second through the fourth with new baby.
Ooh, congratulations!
Tenth or eleventh are good. I eat dinner every day, so I don't care.
You don't care? It shows, Neil. So, was the consensus the 10th or the 11th? No, not the 11th.
Yeah, I prefer not the 11th.
Not the 11th.
I could do the 10th.
Well, 10th is okay.
You 10th? 10th?
Now comes the tough decision. What do you want to eat?
I'll eat anything.
Well, it looks to me that Stockman's is by far the least amount because Queen Bee's isn't, isn't figured in a dessert and no beverage, which is a couple bucks for beverage, so Stockman's is at least a dollar to $3 cheaper, not? Is that what you're saying, gentlemen? Did you send this out again? The menus, did you send them out?
Yeah.
I sent those out, yes.
So, is Stockman's about, would you say, a buck fifty to three bucks cheaper than the rest?
Yeah.
Or the chicken?
Everything that they turn into meat is in front of you. I actually, we had questioned the second menus with the dessert and the beverage and it was, this is the full price, no beverage, and the dessert question was not answered. I did ask her about who in charge and things like that, and that wasn't answered either. Just full price, no beverage. The third venue, they are going to charge us per gallon of coffee, so I don't know how many gallons we can drink, and there is a 20% service charge, but that venue, we can bring in our own dessert. So I divided that out, I just called Teal's, asked him what half she was.
But then you're looking at $6 more.
And both of these, we would, or any of them, we'd be going to that, their venue instead of having it here.
And Stockman's, would it be the, in the back?
It is, and I actually met with them there, except I wanted to make sure we would have enough room, and I told them, you know, around that 40-person mark. That's what we've had in the path up, I can go with 55, we'll have to eat here when we sit in in the hallway, but if we stay around the 40, we can sit there.
And the back room, I would mention.
And if any place would be served what they serve, like it would have to be.
Okay. I think Stockman's makes the most sense. I would vote for beef roast, but I can be persuaded.
Okay, so we got the date, we have the venue and the, the chicken?
Roast.
A roast beef? Somebody?
I would make the motion then to host the Board and Employee Service Recognition Luncheon on Tuesday, December 10th with the second option of beef roast as food option and to close City Hall and Liquor Store from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM.
Second. Moshe by LeBeau, seconded by Merinki to host the Board and Employee Service Recognition Luncheon on December 10th at Stockman's with, was the second option is what?
Yeah.
Is the food option and to close City Hall and Liquor Store from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. Discussion. All in favor, aye? I oppose, none, that carries. All right, on to item C, and this is coming through the Labor Negotiation Committee and the administrator's proposed contract is down there. Couple notes here that this is, we're already almost through with the first year of a three-year contract, and a three-year contract is typically in line with what we do as far as the labor unions, so no deviation from there. And you were going to check on the, to see how the, this laid out with?
I did email Anne and she was not able to get back to me.
Okay. But based on the numbers that are presented there on page, where are we at? I lost it. Page 10, as long as that is on the safe scale and this is, and Administrator Eckery is female, there should not be any concerns about any deviation from that.
Was the union negotiating team going to give a verbal report?
Just did.
Just did.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I would actually make a motion to reject this employment agreement between the city administrator Renee Eckery and the city of Painesville.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Merinki to reject the, um, what am I going to call here? Pretty near, to reject the employment agreement between the city administrator Renee Eckery and city of Painesville, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a number of concerns regarding city administrator Eckery's performance that have led me to second this motion. I had asked for a closed session of the council, which was denied, so I guess we can discuss them here. Over the last 11 months that I've sat on this council, I've noticed a number of performance issues that have caused me to...
And just let me interrupt, can we, we cannot discuss performance in an open meeting?
We really can't. I mean, we, if we're going to have a discussion about performance, I think the employee has the right to request an open meeting, but we have to give notice before we have the meeting where that comes up. We can't, we can't go into that at a, at an open meeting. I don't know why the request for a closed session was rejected, but I think that, I mean, you're going to have to at least notice a closed meeting in order to have this discussion.
The reason I haven't brought it to the council is because we have before us the evaluations that are to be done and would be then discussed in a closed session.
According to our labor attorney, we don't actually have to give cause to reject contract renewal, so we can go ahead and vote on this based on her counsel.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to reject the employment agreement between the city administrator Renee Eckery and city of Painesville, signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Nay. Does carry three to two? Okay.
I would then make a motion to submit in writing to Administrator Eckery that her employment with the city will be terminated as of the end of her current one-year contract, which would be December 31st, 2019.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Merinki to issue a letter in writing that Administrator Eckery's contract is terminated effective 12/31/2019? Is that correct? Discussion. All in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? And minus nay too, so the vote is, does carry three to two. Well, I guess we move on to old business.
I, based on the difficult working environment that already exists here in City Hall, then I would also make a motion that we put Administrator Eckery on leave of absence for the duration of her, unpaid leave of absence for the duration of her contract effective immediately.
Second. And motion by LeBeau, seconded by Merinki to place Administrator Eckery on paid leave of absence through the?
Unpaid.
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 Paid.
Paid.
Paid. Leave of absence. Yes, through the duration of her contract.
Through the duration of the contract. Discussion.
Yeah, that seems like quite the railroad that was been talked about beforehand, it was kind of amazing to me, but this pops up and I hope everybody knows the meeting laws and so forth because it's kind of, kind of awakening for Len, but go on, sir.
Couple things, Councilmember LeBeau, so I understand your motion, this is to place Administrator Eckery on leave with her full contractual benefits and pay from the city. So the city is still performing on our part, but Administrator Eckery is released from her duties effective immediately. Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I would just add that I support this for the reasons that I was going to list earlier and the reasons why I had been requesting a closed session of this council to bring a number of concerns to the council's attention. In my opinion, this should not have been an eye-opening situation for Councilmember Gilmore. We should have been aware of this at our last meeting when I had requested a closed session so that we could have discussed this and moved forward then.
Right, based on your vast experience of 11 months in here and...
Um, let's go with the civil.
I apologize, and, sorry, sir.
You're okay. Okay, we do have a motion and a second, correct, on the floor that has not been voted on yet to, would you repeat it, please?
To pace administer, pay, place Administrator Eckery on paid leave of absence through the duration of her contract.
A motion and seconded to pace, place Administrator Eckery on paid leave of absence for the duration of her contract. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Nay? Was that an aye?
Yes, three, two.
Three to two. That motion does carry.
Somebody will need to shut off the recorder. It was immediate.
Go ahead.
Do we need somebody to escort her out and collect her keys?
May I have a member that ran to the police chief to come get my stuff, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Make a motion to appoint Ron Mergan as interim city administrator until a permanent city administrator can be hired.
Can we also add to that, Belinda took hold?
Sure. amended to include Belinda Ludwig as co-administer.
I'll second that.
Motion to appoint Ron Mergan as interim administrator and Belinda Ludwig as assistant administrator, effective immediately, is that correct?
Yes.
Discussion. All in favor, aye? Aye. I oppose, none, that carries.
Then I'd make a motion to begin the hiring process for a new city administrator.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Merinki to begin the hiring process for state administrator, discussion. All in favor, aye? Aye. I oppose, none, that carries. Anything else?
Um, maybe the... No. I don't know if the policy and procedure need to review the job description. I don't know who's on that committee, but...
Policy and procedures can call a meeting.
Yeah. As chair of that committee, I'll reach out to Ron and probably Jennifer in the next day or two here and we'll put something together. I understand an agenda was probably already in progress, so we can just build off of that and add this to it if we need to.
Okay, all right. Bill?
Yes.
Has your office received any requests for legal work from any counselors outside of going through Administrator Eckery?
Ever, in general, yes.
Within the past six months?
I would say yes.
Can we get a listing of those?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Then on to old business, item A, police and fire wellness plans. On page 22. And we don't have a verbal report, so it's information at this time. We'll move on to item B. The speed detecting signs on page 44 and we have offered from the Painesville Lions Club to donate $7,500 towards the purchase of those heat-detecting signage, signs.
I'd like to say thank you to the Lions and the people in charge of that, Mayor Jeff Thompson and...
No, I'm not in charge, that was through the finance meeting.
You brought it up to the Lions meeting? That's all I can say. Mrs. Unafer and all the other Lions who donated to this cause that I've been kind of chasing for, for quite a while. So I appreciate that and I want it to be on record. Thank you.
Does the payment have to come to the city can accept the gambling funds, correct? There's a 501(c)(3), correct?
It's in the works, takes a little while, like Henry, to get it, but I think midweek, next week I was promised would be the latest, would be, might be this week.
Okay, so we should have a motion to accept the donation.
I'll make a motion to stop the donated 7500 dollars from the Painesville Lions Club.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to accept the $7,500 donation towards purchase of speed-detecting signage. And if I recall, the, the motion from the Lions said in the vicinity of the school, is that correct?
I could look at exact language, but I, I think we talked about it being, there was different discussions about it being in the area of Teal's and then in the area of Highway 55, 23 intersection. But I think that, that was the general area that was talked about. If you're making motions to accept those gifts, I mean, there was a separate item that's not really on the agenda related to features for the water park as well.
Is that part of that 7,500 or in addition to that?
No, that's separate. We can accept that one at another meeting. I think we wanted to get this, this in process, the water park, the aquatic things, not high on our list of...
Well, it's, it may not be high on your list, but, but the Lions Club is motivated to have those funds.
Hmm, that's right.
To the city. So, probably come together, but...
Can we put that on our next agenda?
Whatever, whatever the council...
And make another motion. All right, good.
Do you know how much it was?
So, 7,500.
I would make the motion then to accept the $7,500 donation from the Painesville Lions towards additions to the splash pad, equipment for the splash pad.
We, let's see, we do have a motion from Gilmore. You could, you could amend, friendly amendment or change to make it the, include the 7,500 for the aquatic park?
Yep, I would do that.
Okay, and you get...
I second it, yeah.
Okay, so then the motion would be to accept 7,500 towards the purchase of speed-detecting signage and 7,500 towards the additional improvements at the splash pad. Okay, are we clear? Any other discussion?
On the signs, we'll still need permission from the county, correct?
Yep. And the state?
And we need extra money kicked in.
Without that, we can only put them in the city street at this point.
There was no indication that there would be any issue with that?
No, all we'll need to do is fill out a, a permit with both the county and the state, pretty much. The gist I got was that it was going to be rubber stamped, pretty much. It's just a matter of, you know, we'll let them know that we're going to install the signs and everything else, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be an issue at all. And it, it's my understanding that because we are a city entity, that there shouldn't be a fee as well.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. And it being six thirty, we'll recess the council meeting and the call to order the public hearing. That is been called to discuss the certification of past due garbage, water and sewer, snow removal and mowing bills. We've got a little bit of an update before us here and you have anything addition to that, Don? So that's, so that's it, so that list is before us and public record is part of our agenda. Refuse to be certified, nine forty-one eighty-six, the total in with the surcharge, one thousand thirty-six oh five for the water and sewer, six seventy-six and sixty-six cents, plus the surcharge totals, seven forty-four thirty-three, and then the mowing and miscellaneous there, four thousand seven ninety-nine ninety-six. With the majority of that coming from a deferred assessment on the two thousand eight street improvement. And was that deferment not paid? Is that what the story on that one was?
That was from a street project from two thousand eight.
Mm-hmm.
They had an un, a senior citizen's then, on deferment, and upon death, before the sale of the property, that assessment is come June. Mr. Klein was deceased. There is kind of a relief or deal going on. Nobody has made claim to make that payment.
Okay.
So that's why you see it on the spreadsheet.
Okay. Anybody here?
Tacked onto the property and when they sell, they get it.
Yes, and we might be on those tax forfeiture properties, I don't know for sure that they need a future. We usually don't have this on this, but it is like at the back since it was the first.
Okay, anybody else to speak for, or in regards to the amounts? Clearing, none. We will close the public hearing and get back into the city council meeting. And since Don has traveled this way, we can, be appropriate to go down to that item on old business, which is H and act on that.
I will make the motion to certify the deferred assessment, delinquent refuse, water and sewer, snow removal and mowing accounts to the county auditor to put on the real estate taxes.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Reiki, is on the action sheet on page... Lost it again now. Look, there it is, page seventy-one. Any discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried. All right.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for...
Thank you. Thanks for helping keep the city clean.
Thank you for letting us.
All right, then. For a big bump in the police department...
Mr. Mayor, before we...
Yep.
Maybe I'm just misunderstanding where we're going. I wanted to make sure we were going back to speed sign. Because I don't think, did we approve the motion to buy a speed sign?
No.
Oh. You're correct, we have not.
We haven't had that motion.
Mm-hmm. Would be in order.
Um, the safe pace evolution signs, do those come with a pole or are those mounted to a existing pole?
I believe we could mount them to an existing pole. Traditionally, where you see these are at the speed zones, so they would go kind of like right underneath, say, a speed sign. So that would be what I would look to do is try and have them mounted, because it's kind of telling people, you know, there's a speed limit, here's how fast you're going. So we should be able to use an existing pole.
Okay.
I guess the one question I would ask of the council when you make the motion is, being that the Lions have generously donated seventy-five hundred, do we want three signs? Because with that amount, we should be able to purchase three signs from Traffic Logic.
Um, their quote was a...
Because I think their total's five thousand, right?
Was that for both, for two signs?
That's for two, that should be for two signs.
Oh.
But these, these are solar powered, correct?
They should be correct.
A, as pictured on the one, it's not on a regular speed sign.
Well, the safe pace one's not on any signs.
And if I recall the ones I've seen, they're next to the actual speed signs.
The ones that Belgrade has, which I believe are very similar to this, I believe are mounted directly below. Below.
Okay.
My memory could be incorrect, but I thought they were directly below.
Mine could be too.
But I believe when I asked them for the quote, I believe it was supposed to include the solar power. Just trying to go through that quote here.
Looks like it does, at least it says solar.
Yeah, it says digital solar includes strobe. That sort of thing on the evolution one, Traffic Logic one.
On which one?
The, the one from Traffic Logic, the evolution twelve.
Then I would make the motion to purchase two or three, if budget allows, Traffic Logic speeds, speed signs. And I believe the donation from the Lions requested that one be by the school, so I guess the motion should include that one be placed by the school.
Second.
Motion by Reiki, seconded by LeBeau to authorize the purchase of two or three of the stalker, is that correct?
Uh, safe pace evolution twelve.
Evolution.
I don't, do we, um... Do we need to say anything about that coming with the solar power? Because down at the compatible with, it talks about AC battery or solar power.
Will a batter be, would be powered by the solar?
Right.
Yeah, I just wanted, oh, I want to make sure that's included in the cost, I guess is what I'm getting at.
One of them have, you have to buy marine battery, and I thought I had put that on...
That was the other one.
The stalker. So the other one should have the batteries, the backup.
Okay.
Okay, the motion is to purchase, authorize the purchase of two or three of the safe pace evolution speed signs with one going by the school, correct?
Yes. That was my understanding of the Lions' condition.
Was it just one or did they want?
One or two.
Two of them by the school.
They're movable, so I think of that...
I, I think the Lions will be happy if one of them is there, and then if the other one, if the city believes that they need two of them in that area, that's fine, but I think, our main point...
The discussion that I recall, and, and not on the finance side, but they were talking about the Highway fifty-five coming downhill, which is technically
Before it goes to thirty-five.
As it coming into the school.
Yeah.
Right, and it goes to thirty-five, and there's that crosswalk, you know?
Yep. Lot of traffic, foot traffic that goes across there, I think that would be acceptable. Any other discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
Oppose? None? All right, thanks for bringing that back. Okay, now we go to item C, the police department disposition of forfeited property on page fifty-one. Chief?
Thank you, so just to give you guys a update. We were able to finally dispose of and sell two of the forfeited vehicles that we currently have in our possession, the two thousand five Toyota Corolla and the two thousand three Grand Prix. The Corolla sold to a gentleman out of Baltimore, Maryland for eight hundred and eleven dollars, and the Pontiac Grand Prix went to a gentleman out of... Considering the conditions of the vehicles and mileage and everything else, the numbers aren't great, but it's probably about what they were valued at.
Okay, no action needed, that was already approved and so they're taken care of, all right. Then on to item D, discussion on whether to hold a public hearing on the sober living homes. Door is open.
I think it would be a good idea. I mean, as I've learned more about the various sober living, I've become more and more comfortable with the things that they do and more supportive of what they're doing, and I think that the community would do well to hear from them directly.
If we held a, a meeting, would we be holding, could we get in trouble for discriminatory laws if there was inflammatory remarks going towards them? Because we're offering the situation.
You know, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of inflammatory remarks, but I'm not particularly worried about them as long as they don't come from the members of the council. I, I think, you know, we, we can't control everything that members of the public say, but I think the, the thing that we have to be aware of is I wanted to pass these out. I mean, this was, this is a copy of the letter requesting the accommodation, and if, if I could, I don't want to take too much time, but that, that request was made, the, the request itself states her belief that, that the request is, is somehow private data, but it, it's really, I mean, it would be if there was private data information in there about an individual person who was claiming they had a disability, but in, in my view, and I was pretty cautious about it, I mean, I, I checked with the, the data privacy people at the state and I made some calls just to make sure I wasn't off on that, but they said, no, that this is, this has happened, we're not the first community where this is kind of request has been made, and it's, it's public. And so I, I wanted you to, to see the request that we got. The request isn't particularly specific about, about what they're asking for, except that they want a reasonable accommodation and that it relates to numbers of occupants, I think you can, you can gather that from, from the letter. But, so we don't have a statute or, or an ordinance procedure for a request for accommodation under the Fair Housing Act, but the Fair Housing Act since nineteen eighty-eight has said that it's applicable to people with disabilities. These people qualify as people with disabilities under the Fair Housing Act, so, you know, they're entitled to request a reasonable accommodation. I think we've had situations in the past which technically might have been reasonable accommodations, we always have them go through a variance process. I think most of those that I remember related to ramps or other access issues that people had because of disabilities, but this is the procedure that, that's been followed here, they just did this with, with that letter. I, I think, you know, normally you would have, if, if there had been a variance or a request for conditional use, we'd have had a, a process for that. We don't have a particular process for this, but, you know, to me, it, it requires a hearing and, you know, we may get inflammatory remarks in the public, we may not, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know what to expect, but, but I think we need to give the person requesting the accommodation an opportunity to explain to us what it is they want, why they think they need it, why they should be basically treated differently than, than anybody else in that zoning. And then we need to hear from the people in the zoning, I, I would suggest that we need to hear from our, someone on behalf of zoning administration, which now may prove to be Jennifer, but we'll see. And, and maybe our, our building person, I don't know, I think there was some work done to the house, so he would probably have some knowledge about how things are. You know, and, and this would be since we don't have a procedure, but my view of it is, my recommendation would be that rather than going to planning and having them make a recommendation as we would for some other situations, that we just have a hearing in front of the full council and, and give the, the, the person requesting an opportunity to state their case and, and then hear from staff and other people about our ordinances, why they are the way they are, and maybe address some other issues. As, as all, I mean, it's, you know, I think it's like any other land use request, the standard is reasonableness, basically, and so it'll come before you, I'll probably do some kind of a memorandum before that. My understanding is your next meeting is, is truth and taxation, I think that'd probably be a end budget stuff, so I think you have a pretty busy meeting, so it's probably worth waiting till the next meeting, but that gives us an opportunity to give people plenty of notice. We'll need to publish notice in the paper like any other public hearing, so I'd say that's what we should do. I think we should send a, a letter directly to the applicant so they know and have an opportunity to prepare. But I defer to you on a date, obviously, but I think you probably don't want to do it at your next meeting, because I think that's going to be busy.
Now, the, the research that you've been, you've been doing, you were pretty much ready then to answer the questions that would come up?
I think so, I mean, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's an area where we, we don't have any solid appellate law in Minnesota. I mean, the one situation that made it to the Minnesota Court of Appeals is an unpublished two-to-one decision, so for, for the, the value of that may be not great. I, I will tell you that the cases are all over the board across the country. They go, they go both directions. I, you know, so I, I, I think that we have, you know, two cases in Minnesota that are currently pending in, in the, at the district court level that maybe are going to go up on appeal, that might provide some guidance depending on what happens with them, but right now you have very little. And I mean, I, I can give you some idea of what these other cities have done, but they both ended up in litigation.
Are, are both of those cases specifically related to number of occupants?
Yes. Yeah, very similar, I think one city has an ordinance that says no more than four unrelated persons, the other, I think, said five, as ours does. My, the, the city whose ordinance said four said, we like our ordinance, we're sticking with it. The other city offered some give, but not much in terms of the number, and both are, both are now in court or... So...
Based on your understanding of the the Fair Housing Amendment Act, is it something where we could ask for them to apply for a variance, or is that...
We probably could, but I don't, I don't think it adds anything to the equation to do that, I mean, I think, I think you, you know, you hold the hearing and I think we just, you know, I mean, what would filling out that application add in terms of?
Right now, this is specifically related to one house, and I imagine in the future, maybe there would be requests pertaining to other houses.
Could have.
Would they have to go through the same process, I guess is what I'm wondering.
Unless we, unless we create a process, and if we could do that, you know, we could amend our ordinance to have a particular, set up a particular procedure for requests for accommodation under the federal Fair Housing Act, you know, we, we could do that, I mean...
Would that go in the zoning ordinance, then?
It would go in zoning, yep. But I don't I don't think we, we have to do that right now, we've got the request, I think we should just proceed.
But we've been in the process of reviewing the zoning ordinance for quite some time, so it might be a good time to add that.
I'd hate, I'd hate to slow down the process anymore by trying to change something.
Oh, come on, Bill.
And, and this is, you know, we have the two types of recovery operations in town here, and this would only be, the hearing would only involve one, a four-pronged one, that's...
And it only involves one residence right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, you know, as, as I know, the council is always concerned, you may, maybe set something of a precedent by, by what you do, and, you know, you need to be cognizant of that, but... be cognizant of that. But, but it's, it is on a case-by-case basis. And I suppose facts could be different at a different location. But, but you're setting something of a precedent by whatever you decide, obviously.
These other homes, are they only five people?
What other homes?
That are already covered.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, one of them is in a, in a downtown commercial district. It's not residential. So, I mean, the, the situation is not exactly the same. I don't know how many people, though. I couldn't answer that question.
They had a conditional use permit, though, for that one, didn't they?
I believe they did. Yeah, I believe they did.
So, and then she states in here that this request should be kept confidential as required by federal law. Is that?
Well, again, that's why I checked, was to, to make sure that there's no federal law that says it's confidential. I mean.
And you didn't find anything?
No. And, and, and the, you know, the, what would be confidential was if we were given detailed information on an individual relating to the nature of their disability. That would be confidential. But there's nothing, there's nothing in there. There's no names. There's no diagnosis. There's nothing. I mean, nothing that would be confidential.
So December 9th would be the?
So our meeting is November 25th, and that is not our truth and taxation.
That's not our truth and taxation. Okay, that's.
Truth and taxation is December 9th.
December 9th, okay.
And then we don't meet again until December 30th.
Okay.
Due to the holiday fall in November.
So this should be on our November 25th?
Yeah.
I would, I would say December 30th would make more sense than.
Make more sense?
Yeah.
December 30th.
We would not make publication deadlines on November 25th.
Okay.
You wouldn't get it, you wouldn't get enough notice, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if we'd get much attendance on December 30th either, but.
What was that question?
Oh, I just, I don't know if we'd get much attendance on December 30th either.
Yeah, I'm wondering if January 13th might not be the better option.
Yeah.
Get more involvement.
I'm concerned about kicking this can.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Too much farther down the road.
I think that's fair, too. Yeah.
Aren't we having a special council meeting to discuss the wellness plan? Could we do it as part of that?
You are meeting on Tuesday, November 26th, which you will not meet the allocation government. If you desire to give a 10-day notice. And then I guess my question would be is, are you thinking that you want to handle the notices like you would a typical zoning public hearing? So everybody within 350 feet of the residence in question would get notification?
Yes.
So are we putting that on the December 30th meeting, then?
That, that would be my preference to get this handled and get it, get it answered.
You don't want to entice people out to the truth and taxation meeting?
December 30th, I'm not going to be here.
Oh. Oh, you want to be here.
I want to be here, but I'm going to be, I'm going to be enticed.
The truth and taxation meeting in the past has not been particularly long. The PowerPoint presentation has been filed through, you know, very well where the budget where it's at, our working session, and the ideas on how we thought we were going to make up the deficit. Might have to bring us back lunch, but it would be taken care of then before any other public meetings.
I would be okay with that, I think.
Instead of them. So that would be what?
So December 9th, Monday night, truth and taxation at 6:30. So we usually have 15 minutes apart, so maybe 6:45 or seven?
Do you think 6:45 would be 15 minutes in overtime for that? Maybe seven?
I, I can make it whatever time you.
That, yeah, the 6:30 and 6:45. And if, you know, we can always recess a public hearing and open it again.
So 6:45.
Sure.
On the December 9th.
You got six minutes? Are you ditching this?
I have to be there.
All right. We will move on to the Painesville Police Department K-9 Squad kennel. Chief Wagner.
I don't break any speed laws.
Thank you. So we have been working on the K-9 squad. The one thing when Craig Elfring and I went and looked at the car, we did not see, was the kennel, because they had removed that already. Didn't expect it to be quite as rough as what it was. There are some rusted-through holes, that sort of thing. We have spoken with Spanier welding. The frame of it is still in good condition, so they have the ability to put that back together. We just need to kind of fix up some side panels. And we're looking to add a storage container for some of the equipment that Tom needs in the back of it, as well as a shelf, to assist with some of the storage. So repairs to that, we've got a quote from Spanier for $800 to make those necessary repairs. Based on my conversations with them, when the time comes to replace that squad, we will probably actually use Spanier welding to make a custom kennel, because I think we can get what we're looking for for significantly cheaper. So the $800 we're going to spend now, while it isn't necessarily something that we were planning on, we will be able to recoup that money, I think, in the long run, when we do replace that squad and do a custom kennel through them, so.
And with that coming out of fundraisers, we, the council doesn't need to approve that?
I, we do have fundraisers. We do have, you know, money for it. It would come out of the money that's been raised for the, for the K-9 program. I guess I would just ask for the council's approval to do it, even though it's, it's money through the fundraising efforts.
I'll move to approve the $800 to custom build a dog kennel from Spanier welding for funds to be paid out of the raised funds for the K-9 program.
Oh, second.
That, that wasn't a custom build, right? It was just repaired?
Repaired.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. This, this one would be repaired. It's basically repairing the, the rusted-out areas.
So then I would amend to repair instead of.
Okay. So we have a.
Second.
A motion to repair the K-9 squad kennel through Spanier welding in the amount of $800, as per the bid there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Curious. Next, we have our downtown redevelopment phase two steps one through five. The plan here from Janet King. Chuck, do you have anything you want to?
Yeah. Excuse me. It's showing basically, this is the, the phase two portion gets into the public engagement process, as well as sort of developing the revitalization alternatives for the downtown area. As you may recall, we sort of split the original phase two, you know, sort of scaled it back to the first five items, which is establishment of the advisory committee, presenting things to the advisory committees, and doing the public engagement, and then coming up with the, like you said, the downtown revitalization alternatives, and then preparing a summary of those alternatives, moving forward. If the council wishes after we get to step five, if you continue to move forward after that, or basically get into a more depth analysis on each of the alternatives, and hopefully come up with a preferred alternative by the end of the, the next phase.
So the first, the next five steps is going to cost us $22,000? Twenty-two, three?
Yeah, that's what I got from Janet. Yep.
Our working session, there was discussion about paring this down a little bit. Is there a recommendation on how we might do that, or?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look, you know, like I said, like I think I mentioned at the working session, she did put together a pretty, what I would consider, robust public engagement process. If we, if we want to scale that back and try to limit the cost, I can go back to Janet and, and do that as well.
Because I'd like to know if there's a way to limit the cost and not be so robust, but yet not kick the can down the road. So we have to do all five things?
You know, you're not required to through the advisory committee as well. I mean, that was just an approach to try to, you know, from, based on my discussions with Janet that she thought would help get more people involved in the process and, and help with buy-in into the, into the revitalization plan. But, you know, there are options here. And maybe I can have her put some ideas together with some different cost options in it, if that's what the council would like.
Personally, I'd like to think some different cost options.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we budgeted for those.
No.
So we can look at sort of, you still, would the council still want to get to sort of the same point that we're getting to here, of, of maybe some different options as far as public engagement?
I think that that's a good place to get to, having alternatives. But, you know, if we need to break that down into a couple of smaller steps.
Sure.
So we can budget more effectively.
Okay. No, I can certainly do that. I will have her put some additional numbers together.
Okay.
All right. Up next, we have our 2020 budget proposed fee increases. This was presented to the Budget and Finance Board, and they've recommended approval. You'll see that after further review, the fees, staff found a few more fees that could be adjusted and are being presented as well. Staff determined that maintenance building permit fees are not tied to the 1994 building permit fee schedule that the city is currently using, and they can be adjusted independently. We've attached also what other cities are charging. The last time the building permit fees were increased was 2003. Jennifer, do you have anything you want to?
So on page 59, everything above, after further review, was presented to Budget and Finance. And then as we went through the fee schedule and updated it, there was a few, like the moving permit and temporary structure, that just seemed like maybe those could be also incorporated. Just some minor adjustments there. And then I spent some time with Brad talking about the building permit fees. We have not increased them since 2003. We thought maybe because of partial of the, you know, deficit that we were in, maybe some building permit fees could be increased. He did a little research with some area towns. And the, the maintenance permits are standalone increases that we can adjust without increasing the entire 1994 schedule that we are on. So if you do a $20,000 model project, that's not going to affect that that's going to stay on the 1994 fee schedule. It'll just change like your shingling siding, windows, doors.
So this is presented as information only, and if the council consents to move forward, there will be a resolution prepared. So if anybody has any input on that?
Ultimately, you could, off of page 59, you could, you know, take some, delete some, increase them less, you know, change. And then whenever you just added a resolution, you should go back. So if you thought some were too much or too little, or if you didn't want to change it all, you can make those adjustments.
Jennifer, at the current rates for the parks, I'm looking at Gazebo and Veterans Park.
Sure.
Are those pretty solidly booked throughout the summer?
Gazebo has gone down because of Veterans Park rental, because everybody wants to get Veterans Park. We are, I just got the 2022 schedule out, because we have just put in the newsletter that they're taking reservations. It is highly, highly used for graduations. That is the place now to have your graduation. And staff has heard that it's such a great place, and it's very inexpensive. So we thought that would be a place that maybe we could adjust, because you can't rent tables and chairs, a full kitchen, for what we were renting that facility for. We do have to, you know, recognize that we have labor out there, because whoever's on call has to be called out there to pick up garbage, clean the restrooms. They're also using old paper products through the rest of the restrooms. So, and then there was talk about actually putting a grill out there, because the old charcoal grill has seen its time. Where we would put a gas grill out there, you can just be responsible to your own propane, because a lot of people grill out there. So that's kind of why we maybe thought about the increase. And just because you cannot rent the chairs and tables for that, for a tent, for that amount that we got. We do realize that that is, you know, it was put out by public funds. But there is a, a lot of people that want to run that in the May-June time.
I think Budget and Finance also looked at park shelter rentals in the surrounding area. And I think even 175 was within the ballpark that other communities are charging.
Yeah, they did do a survey with, like, a leash aside a bunch of other areas. Some, of course, don't have amenities we do. They're much less. Some even have more amenities and are even less. So it's, yeah, you could go either way.
I just don't want to get to the point where we're discouraging use. And it, it doesn't sound like we're there for veterans, but I, maybe gazebo, I don't know, is justifying.
You know, the gazebo, when I first came here, it was used a lot for, I can't say it, for weddings. People got married there. Now with the slash pad being there, that was the first slash pad. I think some of that has to be created. Now it's mostly used for birthday parties. A lot of it is birthday parties, or just family, families getting together. And I think people, when they want to reserve it, they think they're reserving the whole park. So we have to do a little bit of education, and it's just the gazebo is kind of their home base. I believe with the expansion of the slash pad and now the new playground equipment, I believe that's going to be used to more. And the other thing is, is that the facilities, the rest of your facilities are still accessible, whether you rent it or not. And then the other little shelter there is non-rentable. That's the first come, first served. And that is free to them. As well as the Veterans Park, the shelter that's closer to the beach, that's non-reservable. And that's first come, first served, as well as Community Park.
All right. Thank you. I think we're going to have to be really careful on telling everybody we want everything updated and nice, and the buildings downtown nice and so forth, but keep on raising the fees to make it nice. Kind of a double-edged sword. Just a kind of a FYI.
You're talking about like, building permits?
Building permits and so forth. Have you started buying building permits for your buildings when you're remodeling and so forth?
Mm-hmm.
You got to be.
The remodeling charges will not increase. With the, the fees changes that you make, the remodels, that's based on the evaluation, would not change.
Unless you had to do a, any kind of rezoning or squad split or anything like that, if you're doing a remodel or project.
So commercial, you know, if you do, if you do a door, windows, shingles, roofing, those are all evaluations. Those are not going to change. They're going to still stay on the 1994 schedule.
Assuming the one that, percent of thousands of dollars you spend on the commercial, the rate's not going to change for the amount you're spending.
No. Because in commercial, everything is based on evaluation. They're not the maintenance permits. They're not the over counter.
So this is just getting the homeowner to that?
Correct. If you want to do it that way, yes.
Yeah, and we, we compared with surrounding cities.
And the county, favorite.
Yeah. So on page 60, we looked at some other, some other cities. And then we just looked at how many years it's been since we did any type of increase. And, you know, maybe we're behind, or we should be increasing maybe a little bit. It might be every five years, instead of maybe still lying and going, oh, maybe we should increase. But it's entirely a little too far.
Does anybody have any backward direction? Do you have any direction as far as, are you good with what's proposed here?
Nope. I'd like to proceed with what's on the page. I think Finance spent quite a bit of time on it. So.
Does anybody have any backward direction? Do you have any direction as far as, are you good with what's proposed here?
Nope. I'd like to proceed with what's on the page. I think Finance dumped quite a bit of time on it. It's the areas that probably should be increased.
I'm okay with some of these, and I have concerns about others. I think maybe we ought to put it on an agenda and through a process of amendments, or maybe even I could just submit something in advance with what I would be proposing. Figure it out from there, I don't know. I think it makes sense to increase some of these, like a variance request, because we're reworking our zoning laws to sort of discourage variances anyway. But I, I struggle with the fact that we're even charging for the parks in the first place. But I get we have to offset a lot of the city costs that we have. But I want to be able to make sure that we're maximizing our usage and making sure that these things are available to people. And I, I think Councilmember Gilmore is correct, in that we need to ensure, we're going to see more benefit by encouraging building and remodeling than a $14, $20 permit. So, I, some of these I'm good with, others cause me pause.
Should we table this till our next meeting, and then you can bring back some things for us to discuss then?
I could do that.
Okay with that. Okay, that's what we'll do, we'll table this. And we did the certification of the past due garbage, so we're on to the AMPI expansion project. Chuck, do you want to give us a verbal report?
Yeah. Excuse me. Just to give a quick update on the project, they, they continue to work out at the pretreatment site at the wastewater treatment facility on that new building. New forest main from the lift station north of the tracks out to the site has been completed. In addition, they'll, they'll be working on the, the new pipe under the railroad from the AMPI facility to the lift station over the next couple of weeks. And then they'll continue to work on the pretreatment building over, throughout the winter. So, that's, that's one they'll continue to work on. So, in your packet is a pay request for the project for work completed in October in the amount of $512,008.77.
I'll make the motion to approve payment number four in the amount of $512,08.77 payable to Eagle Construction Company Incorporated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve pay estimate number four, as on the action sheet here. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And then we have the 2019 Street and Drainage Project.
Yes, just to give an update on that project, the majority of the work in the southern part of town, the eclatic addition, has been completed for the year. They are, however, they are continuing to work on some of the, the new lift station down in that area, as well as some additional work in, right adjacent to the lift station that they'll continue to work on. Currently, they're working on the storm sewer over along Minne Street. They've finished the storm sewer to the north of the railroad tracks, and will be starting the storm sewer south of the tracks tomorrow. So, they'll continue to work over the next couple of weeks to finalize that storm sewer. The Second Street extension, as we talked about a couple of meetings ago, with that change order, with the time extension, that we, they would do that if it was possible to get it done and still get it paved well, given the weather. That will be, have to wait till next spring.
Okay. The weather's not holding up their sewer projects, though?
They're, no, they're able to get the, continue to get the pipe in. There'll, there'll be some little work, obviously there'll be work that'll need to be finished next spring, but they're planning to still get the majority of the storm sewer pipe in.
Okay.
In your packet is a copy of Pay Request Five for that project for work completed in October in the amount of $611,581.50.
I move to approve Payment Estimate Five in the amount of $611,581.50 payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating of Painesville. Second that.
All right, we have a motion to approve Pay Estimate Number Five, as on the action sheet. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And then I believe all we have left is our informational. We have the liquor store report for the month of October. And we have our law enforcement calls report for the month of September. And I think that's it. Oh, that's right, we got a updated. All right, on our updated, we have also the community-wide presentation, The Dangers of Vaping, Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the high school auditorium. And as the mayor mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, we have this, or I know as the police chief mentioned, we have the state football send-off coming up this Thursday, 9:15 at the high school.
We previously, as a council, had to approve the send-off. Do we need to do that again? I know in the past, we've authorized the police and fire departments, I think, to escort. That's my recollection of what, what we approved.
It might be okay to have a motion, don't you think? I'll move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve or authorize the police and fire department to escort our football team out of town on Thursday. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And with that, we are adjourned.
All these should be, should, were these guys here for anything?
Uh, no.
What are these going on? Why would these? What? Then you probably want those, they should go to Jennifer.